We just have Mr. Staff, me, Valen, Richard Boucher, Jay Fain, Peter Hood, Peter Mahoney, Ted Lookzinger, Diane is here as well, Diane Saunders, Heather Rosenthal and Salvatore Salizier. Very good. All right. If we can all stand real quick. I'll put my flag in his head. There. Undelegance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America. The wishes stands on the nation under God in this law, liberty and justice for all. Thank you. No need to appoint any alternates. There's going to be an executive session with the commissioner, with conservation director Timothy Bishop to discuss current status of litigation related to 120 Wakeman Lane, 120 Wakeman Lane LLC, Kenny Norwood and Home Loans LLC versus Conservation Commission of the town of Fairfield. And I have a motion to go into it.
Yep. Your motion has to include that you're inviting me.
Yep. And you and staff. I think we have to invite both. Yeah. If I can have a motion.
I'll make the motion though. Do you include the counsel? Do I have to say including counsel?
And staff. Anybody second that motion to executive session? And Ted seconds that motion to go into executive session and invite counsel and staff. All in favor of that? Aye. Right. Members of the public, we are going to get up and go to a different room. Our round council is going to discuss stuff with us in private. Then we'll come back now and we'll continue with the public portion of our meeting. Okay? Thank you.
Recording stopped.
Recording in progress.
All right, we are out of executive session. No action was taken, no votes were taken. Is there a motion to, from anybody to allow counsel to settle?
I'll make a motion based on our, I don't know what you said, based on the substance of our kind of our executive session. Motion that be authorized attorney parole to act and we have to seek a settlement in the case of Norwood versus Transulation Commission.
So I would, I would, the motion I think you need is a motion to approve the settlement on the terms discussed in executive session.
I amend my motion to include this in the terms of settlement discussion.
Exactly, executive.
With the term.
Just taking the actual note.
And it's, yeah, it'll be, they'll come off of the recording.
Okay.
Also, can you just say it one more time so they can hear it?
Yeah, the motion was a motion to approve a settlement on the terms discussed in executive session.
Okay, and Commissioner Fane, that's your motion.
That's my motion.
Would anybody like to second that motion? Had senior seconds that motion, all in favor? I follow around, it looks like, very good.
All right, moving on to Roman rule five, approval of draft moving minutes, the Indiana Wetlands Agency from October eighth, twenty five. Missions, any questions or comments? Otherwise, then just back. And now we're going into. Roman rule six, the public hearing number one is continued, it's WP dash twenty five dash zero one three two W M C engineers Brookside Drive Bridge in the vicinity of four fifty two Brookside Drive. Adjacent to map one, three, particle two, one of ones. Replacement of the Brookside, Brookside Drive Ridge number zero three six nine seven over Mill River. The decision may be made if the hearing is completed or the hearing should be continued. The seventy five to the timeframe to complete the hearing ends on November twelfth, twenty twenty five. And additional sixty five days of attention may be provided by the applicants for the public hearings. Hearing continuations to January sixteenth, twenty twenty three. A potential continuation date is December third, twenty twenty five. If the hearing is completed, the agencies shall make a decision within thirty five days. Missions that are eligible to vote are Lucas Thomas, Danny Bowen, Richard Boucher, Peter Hood, Jason Edelkaiser, Salator, Salo, Dan and Tom, and Heather Rosenthal. Mention is that we're not present on ten eighth twenty five. And to be eligible to vote, they must take for the records that have listened to the recording and gave consent.
And I have.
You have? Excellent. So we're good, we'll keep the board at this without any ultimate conflict, so we can. Oh, and staff recommends approval with conditions. So who's here to speak with us? Come on up, give us your name and info and.
All right, members of the commission, my name is Keegan Elder. See consulting engineers representing the owner, the applicant. We had a public hearing last month and a fair amount of questions about. Try to address those in family fashion, get it back two weeks prior to this meeting. So I can open up the plans, I can go through sort of list of questions and comments and how we address them.
Yeah, why don't you do that?
Yeah.
Yeah, just the comment, we did, there was a presentation last time, let's go through the comments, there might be a few extra comments since in response to that.
For those.
Well, I think that should be more than that.
Okay. Fair enough, fair enough. All right, so for Brookside Drive. Comment one was provide any fisheries or any D D correspondence, we included those in the revised application. There's a number of specific recommendations that you said incorporated in your plan, do you just mind reviewing them because they're very specific to what these actions is interested in? Yep, so the comments for fisheries and comments from fisheries and some of the comments from professional work. Any recommendations, some fisheries in the plan, those comments were included in our plan sheet. If you go into. Plan sheet number four, I guess it starts on plan sheet number three. Loop wrap around the abutments covered in natural fuel bed. In addition to that, the over at the slope. Capitalizing. Fisheries due to sensitivity of this area and just what's. Those comments were included on those sheets, the plunge pools was another comment. But before that, we included. Just that wording says for all types of base sort of plans, calls for mitigation and planting, we showed. We have modified the plant and plan, there was a basic species plant in that schedule. They're looking for all those, that's out and.
You didn't say that.
Yeah, that's okay.
You don't need to cultivate.
No, 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 no. That is out. The blue of the. Real there that is inserted in there, but we'll send those sheets to you, so. Those were fisheries comments and plan changes. Some of those, if I go through the other comments and responses. Thank you very much. Gotcha. Comment number two, provide alternative analysis. We included that in the narrative of the four different alternatives that we considered during design. Reviewing each one for its environmental impacts, its costs, its hydraulic impacts to the project. Up here in those against fisheries recommendations. And in review of those alternatives. One was the conventional precast concrete abutment, concrete beams generally have a longer lifespan with the concrete beams. However, those are deeper superstructures for the concrete and what you're having to do to raise the road. Even more in such a tiny area, which would in turn have more environmental impacts and a reduced hydraulic capacity. So we eliminated that option. We also looked at full sided structure, like box culverts.
So, so you did, you proved it, feasible alternative analysis?
Yes.
And it's in the record?
It's in the record.
That's fine, so you believe that the one that you're going to do now is prudent and feasible alternative?
Correct.
That's fine, go on, thanks.
Comment, please provide spaces, features, procedure, in the plans, we included specification that we used. Kind of spec, we use those as basis of the timelines, procedures for that on all state jobs, we do that. Number four, planting plan and mitigation, I just spoke about that briefly, that is included in your package now as well. Shows water was created, potential wetland created and there is established with wetman seed mix and planting. Along the embankments or disturbed fisheries did have recommendations that we top dress with natural streambed material. Most of the areas under the ordinary high water, but anything beyond that that we disturb for. For relocation of utilities, access for them to do actual work and construction. Planted and added seed mix to try to mitigate and restore those areas to the best of our abilities. Comment five, specific handling water strategies to be allowed during construction. Not leaving it up to the contractor, it was a sticking point, but we sat down with Mr. Hurley and the rest of the engineering staff. And we agreed to specify two methods for the contractor. Those are included in our handling water plans on the other drawing set as well, but it's going to specify that they're use drill piles with lagging. Because of the depth of the water surface, so contractor will not be allowed to use sandbags. Dam the channel and pump or use bypass pipes in accordance with what was specified on the plans. We allow them to do drill shafts with lagging or concrete blocks wrapped in plastic. If either of those methods would.
Either way, because there was some done last time, so at least now, one or the other, at least we know which one is which.
Correct, correct, and we specified those, and in addition to that. If he chooses to do a method beyond, because the state statute or state spec eight eighteen, eight nineteen, sorry. Does allow them to use means and methods and submit a plan for approval. They have to now submit either one of these two methods that I recommended or we recommended in the application. If they choose to deviate from that, we note that they need to seek approval from the town and the commission prior to proceeding.
So at least we'll see it before they see it.
Before they do.
That ways the project anyway.
Correct.
Okay, that's good, there's enough pressure points there.
Yep. Provide plunge pool drainage outlets, we talked about that earlier, those were included in the plans, but the details that our drainage analysis to include that. Provide compensation for wetland impacts, we talked about those already, some of the mitigation errors are shown in your plan sheet. Number nine, I'll be right in, you'll see those areas highlighted. Created and here is that where we established. Comment number eight, will there be any post-construction analysis? Typically, the contractor. Is required to monitor the site or make sure that the site is restored within one year of substantial completion of the work. Beyond that, town staff would then take over any monitoring, so it leaves the contractor responsibility. And town staff would have a conversation with the engineer and staff and public works will take over beyond that one year. So the contractor, once he gets a substantial completion date, within a year, we hold retainage. And he's required to come back and make sure everything is established, growth is growing, anything is as it should be.
So is that with them or is that with us, the bond that we usually do, how does that work?
That would be with, with our department.
Our, okay, okay, thank you.
Yep.
Comment number nine was more designated to Congress Street, but we'll go ahead and include. The was regarding vibrations monitoring during construction.
The gentleman here, we'd like to get specific, that's going to be.
Yes.
The important one.
Yes, so, so we went ahead and we.
Mind if I, if he can introduce himself so we know.
I think we corresponded by email.
Yes.
But, you know, I really had, you know, one major concern, which was. And it originates with the twenty fourteen project, which is America.
Yeah.
Parkway Bridge, which was threatening and the solution at that point was to. What seismic monitoring device on my property. And that was in fact, make sure that the vibes did not exceed.
Would you like to hear what they're proposing?
What, what is your proposal?
So we're doing that, in addition to that, what the contractor is going to require to do is a pre-construction survey of your property.
Okay.
To make sure that, okay, there was no damage prior to him starting his work.
That's good, because it, one thing that I actually did prior to that was I took pictures of my basement.
Yep.
You know, in cases. You know, and, and then they put on the device, nothing happened and that was fine. The only difference is, and actually the twenty fourteen project was harder, you know. Because it was the whole Merritt Parkway Bridge, but there, it was farther from my actual house. There was a, an adjoining. Cottage area, which has now been taken down. Project has been closed, you know, I mean, and although, I mean, the supports on, on my home are very good, they're, you know. Treated wood doors and very solid.
Well, that's would be, that, that would be indicated in their.
We would actually be taking the pictures.
Yes, so the contractor is going to come out, they generally hire their few firms that specifically do this. They come out with their seismic equipment, before they get there, they'll do a pre-survey of your property, take pictures.
I'll take them in as a basement.
Yep.
And they can take, can also take the pictures.
They will do that.
Copies.
Yep. Yep.
And that, that's perfect, because otherwise I.
Hopefully that satisfies.
That, that does, yeah.
Please keep in touch with our department throughout the process, if there's any issue, they will be able to communicate with.
Okay. And, and you know, the other, obviously, I was thinking, and I said this last time, is it would be nice if in terms of the water flow. Of it could be. Opened up and, you know, whether, for example, because there's an inlet, which used to be. And there's much more in fire metal, nice for this happen now, because it's all overgrown.
And we are opening up the channel.
So basically, I get to dredge.
Yes.
You know, they're going to open it up.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, greatly appreciated. Thank you. That's a great relief, so.
You're going to continue on with this presentation, please take a seat.
I'd like to.
So that was comment number nine, comment number ten. Was the salt velocity dissipation, was that considered during design? Her conversations with fisheries and maintaining. This general distant channel flow and low center. Did not do things that would potentially dissipate or change velocity, like introducing multiple boulders, things of that nature. Those would have had more, would have had more impacts to. Introducing multiple boulders, things of that nature. Those would have had more, would have had more impacts to channel. And. It's not something that fish. So that comment number ten was not uh incorporated. Inclusion of the riprap, the plans specify those locations, uh, top dressed with natural stream bed material. Per the recommendation and the toe holders, as I mentioned earlier. Uh. Other comment, comment number twelve, Osprey frequent uh, visit the Brookside Bridge. Can construction be delayed until June? Um, I spoke with Phil and in his experience, usually once construction's done, they generally come back. That being said, there is a possibility that construction could be pushed out. That far, just for general uh, overview. Once we get through the certification process, we can then submit to the Army Corps. Which if all goes well today or the follow-up meeting, the Army Corps application will not go in until sometime in December. Army Corps generally takes six plus months to do a review. And we would not let the contractor break without all the documents in place. So there's a possibility that we get there early, but there's a possibility that we make that deadline. Yeah. Yeah. Uh, so those, in, in general, those were the comments that we were able to. Or ascertain from the video and the notes of everyone at the meeting. I went back and forth with town and staff and we tried to include. Uh, updates to the plans in addition to the narrative to include everything in the, in the documents uh, associated with this application.
Okay. Comments?
Comments?
Um, I think the process worked because uh, it's a much better project at this point. Um, addressing our comments, addressing fisheries comments, uh, these are, those are the concerns I had, low float channel. It's an important resource. It is a trout stream. Um, you know, the only thing I would say, uh, obviously the multi floor rows is uh, um, was a mistake. Uh, I li, I would like to see probably a more robust planting plant um, with more trees that, you know, were um. That, that should be in this place here, but I think that'd be something that's I, I would trust staff to do. Um, and I'm, I'm, this comments are going for, we'll talk about the other one in a minute, but for both projects. Um, but with, with, and then the invasive species plan, I read it. It's very good. Um, and I, you know, I think if we do those things, uh, ultimately this is going to be in a, a good situation and improvement on the.
Okay. Yeah, we could certainly, we could certainly add a couple more trees to that plan based on.
You know, I'll leave up the staff, you know, and again, I know it's, it's tight with the riprap and everything, but you know, I think you could probably could. Use a few more things in there, you know, try to get reestablished some shade in there because it is a full water fishery.
Yep. Interested in doing something. Look, sir, anything?
Uh, I remember seeing a piece for the, a third party group that is. Trout Unlimited, yeah, with, it was a possibility of them.
That's the next bridge.
The next bridge.
Yeah. The other one over.
Yeah, we're on uh, Brookside Drive Bridge. And I'm in sort.
I have a question. Is it, you have fish and wildlife that wanted a, a. Like a little pullover?
Uh, that's fisheries part wanted a parking spot.
It's fishery, Connecticut.
Connecticut, deep fisheries.
On sand, sand mortar.
Yeah.
On sand mortar?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Like on the same side as.
I don't know. I, I know they provide, you did provide it.
Yeah. So we have, we have the shoulders there, but as far as. Going beyond sort of limits of the survey, I mean, that might be something we talk with public works about.
The gentleman, when the gentleman was here before, he was um. Alluding to it being on the other side of the street. So I just wanted clarification to say that's private property. Is it where the current over is just? Uh, what is that? Just west of the? Of the dam?
So. I couldn't tell you place this parking spot. It's not clear where it would be. I also go driving, driving and say upstream. Would he be on the left side, on the right side?
So driving upstream or driving.
Uh, east.
East, east. So east, there is some parking up on the left side.
Correct. And that's where they're proposing.
Yeah. So we're, we're not.
Just wanted to clarify.
So they're just paving that area, which is already in a.
It's like dirt, yeah, like.
Right, right, right. It's just a dirt.
It's just that the gentleman before had alluded to being across the street, which is private property. I think we're all.
Yeah, but yes, as far as the scope of the plans go, because of the funding, we did not formalize that area. We are doing clearing to do the temporary utility relocation, put some poles in. And my anticipation is that the town would work something out with the contractor to make it gravel, just establish it a little bit more instead of paving more than they need to.
Yeah, I don't think we need any more papers.
Yeah, no more.
Anything further commissioned? Okay. Um. I doubt anybody here, but just stay there for a minute while I, is there anybody here in, in person that would like to speak in support of this application? Anybody here in person would like to speak against this application? Anybody online that would like to speak in support of this application? Anybody online that would like to speak uh, opposing this application? Nope. Okay, moving on to the next public hearing.
You want to close, close the hearing and vote on this?
Are we going to vote on all four? On.
We have a separate step one.
Okay, we'll do. So is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Don't move.
Any second. Uh, Daphne, on the paper? Aye. Okay. All right. So then going on to the second public hearing, which is uh, WP dash twenty-five dot zero one three five. WMC engineers, Congress Street Bridge, restricted to be of five thirty-seven Congress Streets, adjacent to map fifteen apartment forty-seven. Replacement of the Congress Street Bridge number zero oh one nine six on the river. This, the decision may be made if the hearing is conceded, the hearing may be continued. The thirty-five day public hearing timeframe is complete. The hearing ends November twelfth, twenty twenty-five. An additional sixty-five day time extension provided by the applicant. So further public hearing continuations to January sixth are possible. Twenty twenty-six are possible. A potential continuation date is December third, twenty twenty-five. If the hearing is completed, you shall make a decision within thirty-five days. Uh, them is the last one. Kate, did you um, review the record for this? Excellent. Okay. And the staff recommends approval with condition. Sir, your name and position for the record?
Uh, my name is Keegan Elder from WMC Consulting Engineers, representing the town of Fairfield on. As the designer and applicant for the replacement of this bridge and the application.
Excellent. Want to do the same thing here?
Yes. So I'll go through.
Yep.
The comments. As, as before. Uh, the Department of Fisheries and NDB, writing comments at our agency meeting at DOT. Uh, those comments were incorporated and accurately detected on these sets of plans, uh, which was updated. Uh. One of the differences with this project, they requested a sawtooth deflector on the. Subtly, restily, uh, channel embankment, provide more habitat, fish and slow velocity. On that nature. So this one shows that sawtooth deflector. In the plants uh, on the northerly side or eastern side of the channel. With the plan sheet number three of eleven. They had a similar uh, request to first time, which was channel boulders at the toe. Uh, behind that, the riprap process with absolute stream bed. Those details all included in the plans along with the location. Facts uh, associated with those. So don't revise them within the drawing.
Do you mind just showing us where that is on the plans, the thoughts of the project?
Yep.
Yeah, nice. See? Okay. Sawtooth to me. Sawtooth. Well, we get this.
So, if you can see my mouse cursor.
Yeah.
You're the sawtooth deflectors.
Yep.
On that restally side of the channel. More velocities than they want from all, you know, more um, habitat. For. More fish. Um, and the channel boulders are along the toe. The easterly abutment as shown, as shown here and. Our shaded line is our temporary call for them. Uh, as I mentioned before, there's no. Talks about the types of call for them that contractor can use. The drill piles with wagon or concrete blocks wrapped in plastic. Sandbags, dam and pumping up the river will not be allowed. Contractor proposes another handling water call for that method on the, on the stated above. It must be a CTDOT or CTDV approved method. And it cannot be implemented without prior approval of conservation staff. Uh, so these are NDB, time is six four four, contact nine. Find alternative analysis similar to the other bridge. Those were included in the package. Uh, invasive species removal. Uh, as well that standard specification is included in the, and invasive species removal plan also included. Environmental. Uh, phantom plan as well as mitigation in areas disturbed, as I mentioned before, that's not top. Bed material. Uh, we include a phantom plan, wetland seed mix to sort of restabilize those areas. We do have to relocate the overhead utility bit for the road. Uh, to get the clearance required for the crane to set the structural components. So those areas that are cleared will all get reestablished, replanted upon completion of the project. Comment five, handling water strategies. We just talked about. Comment six, the plunge pool for drainage outlets are shown uh, throughout the plan set. Uh, comment seven, the mitigation we spoke about. Comment eight, similar to the other. With uh, structure analysis. Uh, contractor will be on the. Share. With the commission to, to, to promote, make sure that everything is in accordance with what is required. Uh, we spoke about monitoring structures. This is the project that, that uh, sort of. Made that come about. So this is included in there. Uh, that specification is in your packet and will be in the contractor's packet going forward. Velocity dissipation, we talked about uh, the reasons fisheries wants to keep this habitat as. Uh, close to existing as possible and as, as natural as possible. Riprap shown, the toe boulders and the sawtooth, we talked about the Osprey. That was for Brookside, not this bridge. Um, and that's our last comment. Based on my uh, and conversations with.
Excellent. Uh, Mr. There's any comment?
I mean, it's good. After all, the same things to make better projects, it brings a lot more environmental aspects in the project. It's the only negative comment I have is um. Not quite as bad as the multi floor roads, but probably the skunk cabbage will not grow in those environments. I'll look at wetland species and that's going to be more than I plan to probably should be up to another. At each for that, um, and that can be worked out with staff. You know, that I think those overall are. Big improvement in the way we should, as a town should be, you know, doing these type of projects.
Okay. Any other questions of the applicant? Just one of, if anyone's listening out there, this is a nice format. I wish, where is the camera? I wish everybody.
Yeah.
I'm kind of a sticker on that.
Yeah.
That's a good.
Makes it easy to follow.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Excellent.
I'll just add that I'd like to see the uh, third party site mar being. Not be the town in independent relocation.
Okay.
As a condition.
Okay. Isn't that what we usually do? It's an independent person or is it the town?
Uh, in some cases, uh, town engineering department acts as um. The site monitor.
Okay.
Um.
Other cases?
In other cases, it is a third party vendor.
You feel like all bigger, bigger things that?
Yeah, I, I think in this, in these cases, even though it's a town project. Um, I think the independent consultant would be more effective. Um, as far as frequency, uh, monitor frequency. Um. Engineering is. There's a lot going on.
Okay.
And I don't think.
Would that be an issue?
Uh, no.
Okay.
Absolutely not.
And, and I also saw a memo about trout's unlimited, trout unlimited, wanting to do some work.
Yeah, they'll be bringing an application.
Might be an opportunity to collaborate.
Next, next month they'll be bringing that application forward to the agency. But yeah, I mean, I could liaise.
Yeah, I just thought it was a great idea. So I see that.
And they shouldn't, and they shouldn't go planting things before the.
So where is their project relative to this project?
That's a different thing, right?
Yeah.
Let's, let's focus on this. We might have a long night. So. Any other questions regarding the applicant, uh, and, and his information regarding the Congress Street? Um. Right, this is Congress Street, the Congress Street Bridge. Nope.
Question I heard, I put it up on the screen for you.
Oh, there you go. Oh, good. I, I wanted it out there, so. All right. Well, then, uh, same thing here. Close. Move that, close the public. Any, any second to that? Daphne? Okay. On the paper? Aye. Okay.
Are we going to vote tonight or?
I think we should. I think we should move.
And do we want to vote for both together or one?
Do it now? You want to?
Do it now? Yeah.
Everybody's ready, then um. Third, almost, I think, they're almost identical. It, it's, it could be one, one motion for both, approve both. Approve both um, with whatever conditions and things that you got on a motion. Second it, and then we can have a discussion if you want, and then we. Don't, I don't want them considered together. Yeah.
Yeah, I make a motion to approve both with the conditions. Um, with the condition of a third party independent site monitor on both projects. And with any other conditions that staff deems necessary.
Wanted to add the same thing, more robust planting and changing the planting plan to be reviewed by staff.
You guys have that particular motion?
No.
Wanted it, Daphne, put that motion out. Okay, there you go. Um, any second to that motion? Ted looks in there, seconds that motion, any discussion? Then all the people on the motion?
Aye.
All around. Good. Yep, guys.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Um. We're now moving on to number three.
Talk later.
WTC dash twenty-five dash zero one four zero, Stoffa Homes, five ninety Sturgis LLC, five nine Sturgis Highway, map two four seven, apartment number. Construction of a new single family residence with king ground pool, adios and Havana. Associated site work within a regulated area. Decision was made if the hearing was completed or the hearing may be continued. The thirty-five day public timeframe is completed. The hearing ends uh, on December twenty-five. An additional five day time extension may be provided by the applicant. So further public uh, hearing continuations uh, to February thirteenth, twenty twenty-six are possible. A special continuation date is December third, twenty twenty-five. If the hearing is completed, the agency shall make a decision within thirty-five days. That recommends approval with conditions. Hello, gentlemen.
Good evening.
Introduce yourselves and tell us how you're related to this project.
Good evening, chairman, uh, and members of the agency. Uh, my name is Brian Carey. I'm professional wetland scientist with Land Tech. With me tonight is Annie Semelides, who's the principal of Land Tech and professional engineer. And Justin Towor from Further, who is the design architect on the project. Uh, we appreciate the opportunity to present this application to you uh, for the construction of.
Uh, for the construction of a new single family residence and associated site improvement at five ninety Sturgis Highway. Uh, we are representing uh Stofa Homes uh at five nine Sturgis LLC. Who is a local builder and is invested in the community. Uh, I just, I have a pretty PowerPoint. And then I'm gonna go through. Sorry, I've just got new glasses on. To begin, the site is a, is a. The one point seven parcel in the triple A residential zone. Uh, and currently contains uh an older single family house. Uh, and an existing smaller uh what we call like a carriage style house along the front of property. Um, as part of the uh, as part of the application. Um, we intend to demolish the existing um single family uh house. Keep the garage and keep what we are calling as basically carriage house. Um, which will be uh approved aesthetically, but more than that. I know that the commission did take the time to walk the site. Uh, and perform an inspection, so you know that the site is bounded uh by the Sasko Brook along the eastern property line. And there's also a small intermittent stream that runs through the center of the property between. Uh, the existing single family house and the carriage house. Uh, the parcel lies within a fully developed residential neighborhood, surrounding lots are sim- similarly improved with residential houses. Uh, without buildings. Uh soils and vegetation were delineated by Anthony Zembo, who is uh the soil scientist uh for Land Tech in our office. Um, and I'll get into that a little bit. Uh, the applicant seeks approval for work within the upland review areas only. Uh, there is no direct wetland filling, excavation or alteration proposed. Uh, the proposed improvements um include uh the demolition of the single family residence. Uh, construction of a cool patio is a cabana. A new asphalt and gravel driveway uh replacing the existing driveway. Two subsurface infiltration systems for roof and surface runoff. And two code compliant septic systems, one for uh the proposed house and one for the accessory structure. Uh, limited grading and landscaping and utilities is certain will be associated with these features. Um, work within the regulated areas is really limited uh to uh areas um. Within the upland review area, hundred foot upland review area. Uh, but as you can see, based on our site plan, um there's no work being done um. Along the river, uh and we've tried to maximize uh the distance to any work. Uh, it would enough hundred foot upland review area from the Sasko River. It's a little bit more tricky um based on the existing topography on the site and the way the site has historically been developed. That all of the development outside of the hundred foot upland review area associated with that intermittent street. We took quite a while uh in our design, working with the site architect uh on the client. Uh, to come up with a design that purposefully clusters new construction on the higher central portion of the property. Well away from uh the water courses I was just speaking about. The layout avoids again encroachment in into either wetland boundary and prefers. There's the full stream channels and repairing areas. Um, all disturbed areas associated with construction will be promptly stabilized to follow construction. That being said, I let uh Andy uh discuss uh the stormwater management plan, he was instrumental in putting this together. Um, and obviously it being professional engineer is very knowledgeable of not only the. Town of Fairfield's engine regulations, but also the state of Connecticut.
Yeah, you can leave that point up.
Uh, good evening, my name is Andy Semelides, um as mentioned earlier, I'm a professional engineer and principal of Land Tech at a Westport. Um, there's under existing conditions, there's basically two watersheds on this piece of property. Basically, the middle of the property. And the front of the property drain to that intermittent water course in the front. And then from the middle of the property back drains to Sasko. Um, what we're tasked with here is, as you're familiar with, is the, the cent to two requirement, which is making the existing. Two year storm. And the post ten year storm after improvements. And making sure that our post ten year storm does not exceed what exists today for a two year storm. For the front watershed I mentioned earlier, that goes into that small intermittent water stream. Basically zero flow, zero CFS for a two year storm. For the rear part of the property that drains to Sasko is zero point three CFS for the two year storm. So what we had to do in terms of mitigating that is propose um two drainage systems. So from basically portion of the house and the driveway. Drain to that large system that you see there under that driveway. Um, it's fifty-two. Four by four by three feet deep concrete galleries. That are buried under that driveway, so they're H twenty loaded. And that takes again that. Pave portion of the driveway as well as that front porch house. I think it's parked underground, so there's zero. CFS that comes out of that um to make sure that. Uh, meet that ten to two requirement. The rear part of the house and the patio. Drains to on the southern portion of the property to well fault that which are the plastic chambers. Uh, surrounded by crushed stone. And those are the larger ones, um three and a half feet deep roughly. Plastic chambers that. Then it takes our post ten year storm, some minimums at zero point three CFS, I mentioned earlier, the. Two year pre-existing. Compared to water quality measures. Be provided almost three times as much as what's required for the wanted to runoff, all impervious surfaces. What we're taking down is about. Thousand square feet, that house is roughly a thousand square feet of impervious area. As you can see, the driveway now, it's been out there, it's not really improving. Driveway, so that's not impervious, so there's not much impervious existing on this site. Um, we are proposing roughly ten thousand square feet of new impervious and how we're mitigating that is what I mentioned earlier, these very large drainage systems to. Uh, not only reduce the storms, but also integrate the water quality required. Both, as you you heard earlier, are serviced by new septic systems. The septic systems are completely outside the upland review areas purposely. Um, we're designed and located in those areas. Um, as mentioned earlier, you could see the disturbance in the rear, we're. Completely outside that hundred foot upland review area in the back of the car. And in the front of the property, you know, the existing house was already completely within it. And we did our best to, you know, maintain as much as of the development outside those buffer areas. And you'll hear a little bit later from Brian and how we try to mitigate where we did encroach within a hundred for buffer and what we did.
So just to just jump on top of that, we did come up with a sediment erosion control plan that is in your. Is in the plant set. Again, it complies with the two thousand three. Um, sediment control, erosion control manual. Goodly wrapping the whole thing in a silk fence. Uh, and and will provide hay bales of needed. Uh, within that protection will be provided for any potential uh catch basins that are being installed. Um, associated with the driveway. Um, and then again, as standard on most of the projects, uh as of most of the projects is there will be a site monitor. For the weekly compliance monitoring um or or as. So as you know, the the property, um this is the existing house uh that's located along the road. Uh, the property, while it's not blighted, it it is a bit under uh. Could use a little bit of uh cleaning up and the idea is to keep this house there um and basically. Beautify it without changing. Any of the uh structural method uh other than building society. So just a quick. Use pull a board up. Probably easier to see on the board. So as far as our mitigation plan is concerned, uh. Yeah, planting. We we plan on planting uh along the intermittent stream um that's on the property. Most of the uh back of the property, as you, as you know, is uh existing, existing yard. Um, we just put major plant things in the back, uh just try to maintain these tree line. Um, did have a, did put a planting plan of all native planting shrubs and trees in here. Uh, which is a mix of red maple and service berry uh with some lower shrubs in here, high berry. All natives and then uh the idea is to. Provide a uh seed mix. At this be kind of a. That intermittent stream, um I'm sure when you were out there, it seems blowing in the summer. Doing our diesel, it's uh pretty bone dry. That being said, uh, you know, I think our most important thing was just trying to during the design process, uh designed for. Uh, for agents uh for all the uh. Um, we do, uh, we, we will develop an invasive species management plan uh for that area that we are going to plant. There was some uh small patches of multi. And barberry we did see, um so we we will be removing that. Um, and then I think I'll sell so as to the staff. Uh, we did get the agency staff review that was issued on October thirtieth. Uh, we, we agree with everything uh that was in the uh recommendations. Um, it was pretty minor, um. And, you know, we agree with all that, so we take no exceptions to that. Basically, the applicant, we discussed his note with any of those. Um, as far as summary of environmental benefits as part of this project, obviously, there's no filling or wet or alteration of wetlands. The improved stormwater management plan uh that reduces peak flows currently, there is no. Um, there is no uh. Stormwater management uh on site uh predated that, uh we are enhancing the native buffer along that stream. Um, and uh. We're, we're doing our best to uh, we are improving water quality um associated with the proposed development. So that being said, um, I know you don't normally have questions for the architect, but he is here if you wanna see the rendering. Uh, but that being said, we can answer any questions you may have.
I got a question on the intermittent water course, is there a pipe underneath the driveway, the bridge?
Underneath the road right there.
Gonna be enhanced or made wider?
That's not the goal right now, they're gonna try to use the existing as.
Water going over the.
Water does probably go over that road every once in a while, over top that area.
My concern also was, sorry to interrupt, the, is that that, that's a gravel driveway, how are we gonna keep the gravel out of that intermittent?
The bigger question is, how, how are you gonna keep it a gravel driveway, is that part of the mitigation package? From where calculations or is that?
So we didn't include that area as impervious?
It is.
Not, it's impervious, but we'd include it as part of our stormwater cows, that kind of just handles itself. We're not draining any runoff to it to take credit for it.
Soon as you get over the thing, you're gonna have asphalt, so you know, it kind of begs the question. People buy a house like this, I think the first thing they wanna do is pay the driveway. So I think that, you know, do you consider any pervious pavement instead of doing some of the coltex on this project?
We did not.
Could you, could you look at that?
We can.
And also I noticed on your, on your uh, on that driveway, I see all your leader drains going through your coltech. I didn't see any catch basins, you have it.
Yeah, there's a catch basin.
Can't see him maybe.
So we don't normally provide uh pervious pavement on a residential type property, it's, it's a big lift. For them uh to to kind of maintain, but I understand the concern about that.
Not uncommon anymore, Brian.
Yeah, I, I.
You're saying making this section here sometime?
I don't know, you know, I maybe have, maybe trade off maybe that ground. It's gonna end up paved, you know. From a realistic point of view, so maybe instead of you pave that and put some pervious pa- behaviors or some pervious asphalt where the. Quarter yard is where it's more flop that and it's more, you know, easier to maintain and it's more aesthetics. Um, that's one of the. You have any more, cause I have some other.
No, go ahead.
Okay, um, so I, you know, I'd like to see you at least take a look at that. Pervious erosion, sediment control, I see this, is that X thing around the perimeter of the site that's. Sediment erosion, the yourself fence, so I like to see it, you know, it should be on both sides of the intermittent water, of course.
It is, yeah, it's there.
I don't see it. Oh, oh, okay, you right, right up to it, so I like you to pull it away from there to the limit of disturbance.
That.
Yeah, rather than right to the edge of the stream and I like to see. The limit of where your limit of disturbances and also, um, you know, some kind of permanent demarcation. Rocks or something, fence or whatever you would plan, so that that area doesn't become manicured and, you know, becomes part of your uh. Um, planting plan there, so that area remains natural. Um, Brian did mention the invasive species management plan, which you didn't include. But I did notice when I was out there, there's a lot of pachysandra and other, and it's hard to see with other invasions there because. Time of year, but I think there is quite a, a few.
They're, they're generally limited to the repairing quarter, I did see the pachysandra.
Yeah, so. Um, your electrics, you know, typically in a house like this, you'll do a pole drop somewhere, you're gonna do that.
The utility pole right here. On the northern part of the property. That's what services both.
Are you planning on doing a uh underground portion of that?
Yeah, that's gonna be all underground now, that's.
Okay, is that shown on the plans or?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
That doesn't across, does that?
We'd have to, that's already on the other side of the street.
Yeah, we'll, we'll make sure that that new pole drop avoids the water course.
Hey, do you see it on the northern part there?
I see it going to the house, I don't see it going to the old house.
That's gonna stay overhead.
Okay.
Correct.
I didn't, we weren't planning on touching that.
Those waters.
Okay, yeah, I see it now.
Yep.
You mentioned in one, your planting plan, a conservation easement, I assume there's no conservation, can see it?
Uh, no, there's.
It is on uh sheet four, I think, or sheet L. I mentioned of it, so maybe you want to limit, I don't think it, given our uh our. Position, I don't think conservation easement.
I think it'd be hard to.
Oh, I see, it's in our notes.
Yeah, yeah, um, and then I guess the big question is what do you plan on doing with that large area? Buffering the Sasko Brook, how, how, how do you plan to manage that, Brian?
At this point, we weren't really proposing much over there, there's, you know, there's some mature canopy. Um, it's been maintained as long. I, I most, I mean, I walked all of Sasko Brook on that area, I mean, it's all pretty much lawn. Um, there's a Sasko Brook watershed management plan. I, I mean, we can put some lower shrubs in there.
It would be nice to do a rip, riparian zone along the.
Slow down any water flow. Improve infiltration.
And the other issue um that came through it is the septic system and the filling on the flood plain, so I don't know.
Sure.
So.
So in green here. Is the max flood plain? In red here is the flood plain based on elevation and the flood insurance studies. So.
The green is the flood insurance study, the firm map, right?
Correct. This is the firm map.
It's, I, I know by elevation, but in order to get that, you would have to do a loma?
Loma, yeah.
Yes.
So are you planning on doing that?
So there's two options, right? You get a loma, an E loma done based on just what's existing today. It's a pretty. Great forward, easy process.
Time consuming process. And it's not that straightforward, cause you have to do a pretty big watershed analysis, no?
No.
No.
No, you just do it based on elevation, it's a simple map, we do them all the time.
Forty-five days.
Government shutdown now, so good luck getting that done in a quick manner. Um, so that's something we looked at, but.
Cause right, right now, the, you know, the, the, I guess the note we got there is they're not willing to let that go in terms.
Yeah, so we got a note today that said and staff can opine as well that they're fine making a condition of approval. From a planning and zoning perspective, um, that's the note that came through. There is an opportunity to do compensatory storage also within, outside the hundred foot. Um, but in here, so that might be the initial route and then as we pursue the, the E loma. Um, to just get that floodline moved. Uh, it all depends when the government turns back on, so we obviously wanna move this process forward, so we could. Easily do compensatory storage as a condition of approval to meet P and C staff's requirement. Um, and then also through the E loma.
Yeah, they, they, they're required within, I think it's forty-five days to get back to you and. That line sign in.
The e-loma process based on this is, is a quicker, much, much quicker process. There's not that extensive hydraulic analysis.
We did it for Metro Station and they center and they, that did take forty-five days, so I think, I think this would be.
Yeah, it's, it'll be a quick process.
Realistic.
Um.
Any other questions or comments?
Those are my questions, so my preference would be the, you know, there is, there's quite a few comments. My preference would be to leave this public area open to a lot of applications, rest of the. Comments and live by his plans.
But any other commissioners, any other questions or comments?
So there's some sort of riparian buffer along the, instead of. About lawn.
Oh, the Sasko, I think, yeah.
Yeah.
Commissioner Fane just mentioned that, so we have that as a comment.
Okay.
Yeah, we can address that.
Is there a, a stable culvert under the driveway?
Yes, yeah. There's, there's apparently one there.
We weren't touching it now.
Yeah.
We didn't want to create more disturbance, I mean. Water going over the driveway is definitely probably a rare thing.
Good. And the, uh.
Other questions or comments for Commissioner Staff, anything?
Nope. Okay.
I have a question.
Yes.
Through this. Um, cause it just happened on the previous couple of applications. If we come back with revisions, is there an opportunity that you guys vote that night as well? Essentially, I have my.
If you make us happy, absolutely.
Yeah, if there's a.
I just have the client back there who's gonna ask that.
Yeah, but you take.
Yeah, we'll take.
To address the comments, if all the comments are addressed, then.
So I can.
Yeah, no, yeah, absolutely.
I don't see any.
Yeah, yeah.
Maybe, maybe in that time, the government opens up and.
I'll have it to you by Wednesday.
Who knows?
Right, right.
It picks things up on its own. Uh, all right. So is there anybody here in the gallery, uh, uh, that would like to speak in, in support of this application?
Um, by a K, so I'm Bill Ferentz, on the northern.
Sure, come, come up if you wouldn't mind, give us your name and ad- and address and, uh.
We give them a seat.
Yeah, if you would guys wouldn't mind, sorry about that.
I'm Bill Ferentz.
Yes.
Uh, six ten Sturgis Highway, right to the north.
Yeah.
Um, I've seen renderings and the drawings and, and I, I support the project. It's gonna be a fast improvement over the. Their property. You've seen it. Most of it, so I'm, I'm completely.
You're complete support. Sure?
How much did they pay you?
All right, well, thank you.
Yes, great.
Yeah. Okay. Uh. Okay, anybody online in, uh. Application. Online that like to speak in opposition to the application. Okay. Um, well, I, you have some questions, you answer them, we're gonna mark it over for the next meeting and we should be fine.
December third?
I think so, yes, yeah, summer third. December third it is.
We'll have every, my daughter's birthday, so you might not see me. You'll see somebody. Where's the?
Thank you.
Yeah. How are we now?
Eleven sixty-nine.
Yeah. I wanna, I wanna take a five minute break.
Okay.
Five minute break. All right, we're back. And, uh, we are now at number four. On the public hearings and we're in public hearing, uh, the AP, that twenty-five, that zero, one, four, two. Well, then eleven sixty-nine Saskatoon Road, map two thirty-one, parcel seven, E. Instructions of a new single-family residence with in-ground pool and patios and associated site work and regulated, here we go. The decision may be made if the hearing, the hearing may be continued. The thirty-five day public hearing timeframe to complete the hearing ends on December tenth, twenty twenty-five. And the additional sixty-five day time extension may be provided by the applicant. Further public hearing continuations to her with the thirteen, twenty-six are possible, a potential continuation date is November third, twenty twenty-five. The hearing is completed, the agency shall make a decision within thirty-five days and the staff recommends approval with condition. Hello.
Hello, it's Schloman from SI Design Architects, representing the, uh, applicant and owners of the property. Um, the application is for, uh, a one-family residence on this slightly more than two-acre site. In a triple A zone, it's part of the, uh, I think it's a seven lot subdivision. And I think one or two homes are currently under construction. Um, the site is, um, oriented from the street down towards the shoreline, uh, from east to west. With, uh, between eight and fifteen percent grade down towards, uh, the water. The. Sorry, I'm sorry. You can see on, on this plan, the shaded gray area is an environmentally protected area where no development or no activity at all. Uh, is proposed nor permitted. Um, the residence itself, uh, will be a, a, a two-story structure. Um, as well as the setbacks and square footages are, uh, under the maximum permitted. Um, the proposed developments include a paved driveway. Um, the residence, uh, walkways, patio and in-ground swimming pool, uh, in the rear. Uh, associated, uh, stormwater and soil erosion control. So through the landscaping and regrading, um. Starting to look through. Um, as you can see, the, uh, residence is placed beyond the protected area. Um, in terms of control measures, we have a stabilized construction entrance. Uh, up by the, uh, east side, uh, which is the top of the property. Um, and also a truck, um, concrete truck cleanout, masonry wash area. Uh, tree protection for the existing trees that are on site, which are a few. Um, as well as throughout the property, you can see there are numerous catch basins, linear and, uh. Individual square catch basins to capture all the stormwater runoff, uh, on the driveway, the house itself. The pool, the patio, and as you can see at the very, uh, west of the property, there are catch basins down below. Right prior to reaching the protected area. The engineer, we, we had a whole soil report, uh, and based on percolation tests and bee tests. Um, we calculated, uh, on, on the lower right there, you can see on the very east side. Uh, a series of, uh, forty cul de sacs, uh, capturing most of the water of this project and. It's an all cul de sacs, three thirties, um, capturing the patio water. So, um, in, in totality, there's, you know.
This part.
We're at zero runoff to the neighboring property or to the protected area. Additionally, we are proposing a low stone landscaping wall. Just on the east side of the protected area to also eliminate and mitigate some sort of traffic into the area. I'm sorry.
When you, can you describe that wall, the low stone, like what?
Well.
Give it a more visual of what it would be like.
Let me see, I don't.
Can I get feel some more?
It's a loose stone wall rubble, uh.
Like a retaining kind of wall?
It's not a retaining wall at all. It's more the boundaries. It's two feet high, loose.
Dry stack.
No mortar, dry stack.
Okay.
Um, just as a boundary to prevent people from running into the area, from any activity, any lawn mowing, which is, you know.
Natural grade, right? There's no.
Natural grade, there's no retaining.
Okay.
Two feet on both sides.
Cause one of the neighbors is gonna do this giant monstrosity of a wall, but.
Right, retaining wall.
Yeah. Okay, retaining walls at all, yeah.
Very good.
Um. The, we're, you know, trying to min- minimize, work very much with the grade, the slope from east to west, uh, in terms of the house itself. Um, so tree protection, stormwater management, we also have, um. Also had our landscape architect, uh, the landscape planting include both visual screening and beautification. Um, there's the planting line, if you want me to go through, but there are several hundred trees along the perimeter. Uh, on the interior lining of the driveway to beautification, we have deciduous trees, blossoming trees, a lot of shrubs. And, uh, evergreens along the perimeter. Um.
Just on that subject.
Yeah.
Have you? Um, proposing on your landscape plan, a couple of pieces that we don't like.
Um.
Pretty much all of them. The ones that are on here, are on here?
Yeah, the, the, you know, some of them are really nasty. All right, all right, Connecticut list, the banned list, when you, especially like the, uh. What do you think, definitely like the privet?
Invasive.
Pin oak is fine, the American holly is fine, we, the green giants and the Norway spruces are very commonly used, but privet, definitely the privet is.
Norway spruce from Norway, European. Green giant arbividy, hybrid of Japanese and Western species. Natchitewa maple, hybrid of Asian origin. Privet Asian or European invasive species. Skip laurel, European origin. The National Wildlife Federation recommends a seventy percent native tree to thirty percent ornamental to support life. Bird life and wildlife being used next to a sensitive area, say the least, with respect to easement and to have a planting plan that comes in at three point two percent native. With hundreds of trees, I find offensive. I know it's not your doing, but I'm just saying, I would like to see, I'd like to see the planting plan redone. With a target of seventy percent native species, thirty percent ornamental. I have no problem with those some ornamental. At least move towards the seventy percent. Much better.
The goshum is not appropriate, such the installation to a conservation area, because it does spread and it is invasive, so I'd like. The privet.
I've got a list of native replacements for what you guys have put in, if you wanna take a look at that, but you know. Pin oak is fine, American holly is fine, Norway spruce, no, introduced from Europe. Let me see, for the Norway spruce, they're saying eastern white pine, eastern hemlock, red spruce instead. Skip laurel, American holly, mountain laurel, inkberry, mountain laurel is beautiful, native. Privet, inkberry, winterberry, New Jersey tea. You know, so lots of native alternatives to what you've got in the planting plan. I have no issue with the construction and just the planting plan really offensive.
We will. Thank you.
I had a question regarding your stormwater management, you're showing a lot of cul-de-sacs, but you're also showing pervious pavement. Are you taking credit for the pervious pavement in terms of your stormwater management or is that just?
No, everything is, the calculations I believe are for. Where did you get the pervious pavement?
When you look at your Hudson thing and you look down.
Oh, yes, yes, yes.
Paves with stone. I mean, we like that and I'd like to see it remain, but I just wanted.
We do use it on residential projects.
The other issue I guess has come to light is that it's piping over in least turns, right?
Yeah, I saw that comment. Months are, but.
Yeah, so and this, it was, I know when we just did the last one, they had mentioned it, but they did have that five hundred foot restriction. But I know Attorney Russo had reached out for clarification to the state on making sure that they can do it this for the last one, that the eleven sixty-three, the one we did last year. Cause this one is right next door to it, so it was a different, a little bit different.
Birds don't fly over there.
Too young.
Okay. Any other questions, Commissioner?
I think the, the limits of disturbance are set by the conservation easement, so. I think that addresses, you know, in terms of our buffering, but I think the, you know, the comments had had regarding the landscape. You know, this is a sensitive area, so we'd appreciate addressing that. Other than that, I think it's.
Yeah, like to see that reworked and.
You know, I saw your landscape architect is from New Jersey, but.
Does have a license in Connecticut, so.
No, I just. Now, yeah, it might not.
Have a look at it again.
You know, you know, I mean, the whole industry, the whole fraction is moving towards using as many native plants as possible, so. We, we really would appreciate that.
Yeah, and especially being in a sensitive area.
And I. We'll get it done.
I appreciate that they're building on the contours of the land. Another project that was just, I mean, we didn't have jurisdictional rights, if you will, but at least this, I think is, is gonna be a much more natural feel and look to replants.
That's a good thing.
Yeah, excellent. So if you've noticed with the prior applicants, we have some questions, if it comes in with answered questions to the youth base commissioner, Luxeners. And it's, I don't hear anything that an opposition. Right.
Right, the rest of it, yeah.
Just the point is. I appreciate that, yeah, okay.
And did you say that the driveway was planned to be with semi-impervious or impervious?
There are certain areas of the turnaround driveway.
There's, no, it says pervious, so I went.
And you. Permeable pavement and permeable paver system.
Paver systems with the.
Which are great.
Which are great, yeah.
Layers of gravel under.
Yeah, that's, that's, these soils are great for that.
It looks best. All right. No, okay, so there's nobody here, so that's not gonna show anything there. Is there anybody online that would like to speak in support of this application? Somebody online that'd like to speak in opposition of this application? No, we'll keep it open, we'll continue it to.
I just wanna reinforce what you said. Of the same, you know, defined area, very often we're facing, you know, stretching limits and it's just very nasty.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want my list?
Oh, welcome. Golden list.
All right, moving on to one of the most, seven applications for receipt, number one is WP dash twenty-five dash zero one four six, Rue. Out three 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 Grazner Avenue, map one twenty, was a one sixty-one. The condition clearing within a wetland area to access soil, soil boring within survey, and survey locations. Last day for public hearing decision is January ninth, twenty twenty-six. Last regular meeting prior to January seventh, twenty twenty-six, however, that's an estimated date, it's not bleeding yet. Stabling application pending legal notice and departmental review or scheduling a public hearing for December third, twenty twenty-five. Which is it, is it, is there, has it been a departmental review?
Not yet, these are, these three are for receipt, so.
Just for receipt. So, but do you, you want us to table it or do you wanna public? December third, will it come quickly or do you need more, any more time?
I, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I think they, we've been, I've been working with, with Rue. This is the Handy and Harm and Parcel across from Home Depot. Yeah, I, I think if the agency can fit it in, I, I think the third would be appropriate.
Yeah, all right, I, it's a.
For a public hearing.
Yeah.
To open the public hearing, so.
Okay, so then, well, we're opening, we're receiving it today, we'll have the public hearing on December third. Are we able to sidewalk on this? We don't need to, do we?
Change off study.
That parking lot from Home Depot, it's all changed off.
Changed off, right?
I would coordinate with Rue to get access.
I don't know, we need to see it, they're just doing boring, right?
I don't think it's, I don't think it's, you know.
I don't think we need, what my point is, I don't think we need to see it, you can go to Home Depot, look to the right and it's right there.
Because not much to it and try and see the.
Try and scan.
It'll glow, it'll glow.
I don't know, nice if somebody's gonna develop.
I know, it would be nice, right? Well, Tim said it's mostly plant, so there's only a small portion.
Oh, really?
It's only a parking lot in there.
Yeah, so, okay.
Summer third, that public hearing, all good, no sidewalk for that. Okay, that was good. Moving on to number two, WP dash twenty-five dash zero one four nine, the town of Fairfield. Rooster River in the vicinity of one fifty-five Moody Avenue, adjacent to map forty, parcel one sixty-two. Installation of floating litter boom within a regulated area. Last day for public hearing decision is January ninth, twenty twenty-six. Last regular meeting prior January seventh, twenty twenty-six. Again, that January seventh date has not officially been scheduled or set. The staff recommends stabling application pending legal notice and departmental review or scheduling a public hearing for December third, twenty twenty-five or January seventh, twenty twenty-six. How do we feel about that there, Tim?
Uh, that's, that's really, staff has, and I have submitted this application.
So you're all set, ready to go, December third?
Yeah, and, and the agency is well aware of the intent to.
To boom?
Yeah, to keep the boom project moving. I, I think that would be quick, so I'm probably not too much of a burden.
You guys good with that for December third?
Yeah.
All right, let's put that out for December third. And number three is WP dash twenty-five dash zero one five zero, William Kenny Associates LLC, fifteen thirty-six Reading Road. Map one seventy-one, parcel forty-seven, maintenance dredging of the pond sediment sump slash forbay. To remove fragmites and sediment within a regulated area. Last day for public hearing decision is January ninth, twenty twenty-six, last regular meeting prior January seventh, twenty twenty-six, again estimated date. The applicant requests a fee waiver and the staff recommends stabling application pending legal notice and departmental review or scheduling a public hearing for December third, twenty twenty-five. Or January seventh, twenty twenty-six. So we have these two, the boring and are, are yours, those don't, yeah, and yeah, the boom. I don't think those will take that much time, so.
I don't think so, I mean.
Let's put that one on December third to try to get it underway, okay?
City House before the.
Yeah, yes, that'd be great. And then we, we could also try to schedule a special meeting maybe somewhere.
Yes.
In there, okay, all right. You guys were here last year, right?
Yes, it was for our first meeting, I guess.
That's right, it was right away. Okay, all right.
We thought it was a good way to welcome us.
We don't have anything for discussion. We do have a philosophical discussion. No applications for discussion. Roman numeral nine is the fee waiver request of map number one WP dash twenty-five dash zero one fifty. William Kenny Associates LLC, fifteen thirty-six Reading Road, map one seventy-one, parcel forty-seven.
Why, why do they want to be request them?
They'd say it's well intentioned, man.
Maintenance dredging of the pond sediment before removal of fragmites and sedimentary, applicant request fee waiver of five thousand inland waterline permit fee, staff recommends approval of this request to let the staff discuss.
So, and Bill Kenny is on, online, if you wanna introduce him, but I will come out and say for the record.
Bill Kenny Associates is online, but I want him to go first and then Bill Kenny.
I did, I did meet with Bill, we discussed this project, it's kind of a revival of the record application number twenty thirteen dash fourteen dash oh six. We did, the department and the agency did issue an approval for this activity December sixth of twenty thirteen. They are back now to continue the same thing and my suggestion, Bill, in our discussion after reviewing the project was to me, I feel that it's appropriate, the original application fee would be eighty-five hundred. I suggested paying the removal of the five thousand and continuing with the balance. I thought that was fair only because this is an improvement to the wetland and water course system, but also the application prior mentioned maintenance, but did not condition the permit to perform it. So it's kind of a technicality, but since it's been twelve, going on thirteen years, I think a new application is appropriate, but is it giving, giving some relief, financial relief.
They paid eighty-five hundred upfront before?
They, back then, I don't, it was.
They paid whatever was appropriate at that time.
At that time.
Yeah.
But then would it be something, maybe we should also add into their application that's gonna come before us, maybe put it into a timeframe for like.
Yes, exactly. Bill and I discussed that, you know, we would review, the department would review the application and recommend conditions moving forward that over the next ten or twenty years, that this maintenance and dredging.
And the forbay.
Be specified as an approved condition of the permit, so they don't have to come back.
So it's just the forbay.
They don't have to come to us and pay a fee, they should just go to the counter, say, hey, it's been five years, we're gonna do it again, kind of deal. But we need to deal with that with the, I think with the application at the public hearing. And I think this is why I would recommend the, the fee being waived because of that. Any motion for that?
I'll make a motion.
Rick makes a motion, anybody second that motion?
Ted seconds that motion, all in favor of the five thousand dollar fee being waived? Yes, all, all around except for James.
Oh, you're, okay. This, that was it? All right, very good, all in favor, you said yes, okay, so all around, very good. And now we have, oh, sorry, Bill, did you wanna add anything? I mean, you won, don't.
There he's gone, he's gone.
I would point out.
It got bigger.
I'm sitting here, that's the first fee waiver I've ever.
Not, not objected to, yeah.
Right, isn't it?
I think so. You need a cake or something?
I must be sick.
Well, some candles?
Nothing, nothing to add, thank you. The, the fee in two thousand thirteen, I think was eighteen hundred dollars.
Well, it's, it was two thousand thirteen, so totally different time.
Yes, yes.
Worth about a hundred and fifty thousand.
So, thank you very much, we'll see you at the hearing.
Thank you.
Have a good night, bye-bye.
Thanks for waiting patiently.
Not a problem.
And we are moving on to Roman numeral ten, bills and bond releases, number one is WP dash twenty-two dash one fifty-seven Lucas Papa George. One seventy-seven High Meadow Road. Construction of a new residential dwelling with a in-ground pool, drainage, septic and site worth within a regulated area. The request of Lucas Papa George for final bond release of four thousand dollars. Ten thousand of the original fourteen thousand bond was released in May of twenty twenty-five and the staff recommends final bond release of four thousand dollars. And so, all good with that? Yeah, okay. Is there a motion to approve the release for the four thousand dollars?
We approve the release.
Four thousand dollars, Ted moves, and he's second to that, and Kate's got a second, all in favor? All around, very good. And eleven, Roman numeral eleven is legal enforcement actions, number one. Update of the. One, I'm sorry, two six five Wesley Road. Map one six seven lot nineteen E. Unresolved corrective action involving relocation of a historic sportport located within a regulated area and a conservation easement. I'll, we'll pop this over and you can try to reach out and see what their original thing that they came to us with might have been. Very good. Number two, update, Lynn Ying. Two thirty-six Woodside Circle, map thirty-one lot one ninety-nine. Issuing corrective action order due to inactivity since the previous correct action order. Is that correct or?
Corrective.
Corrective action order. When did it fix that? Was upheld at the November sixth, twenty twenty-four meeting, so what's up? Anything?
There has been some movement since the last, at the, at the last meeting of the agency. I did meet with the owner and spoke through a translator. And they will. There, there was a discussion on they're willing to revisit. there, there was a discussion, um, on they're willing to revisit selling the town the property.
Wow.
Okay. Which is adjacent to our existing open space.
Yeah.
So because of.
But isn't there like a, a house that's like.
There's a house that would require demolition, um, but they, uh, are of the, um, understanding this time that, um, the project to correct exceeds the value of the property, so.
Really?
It's very tiny parcel, it's maybe quarter of an acre.
Okay.
Um, so I'm working on finding out, uh, with finance department if the original three hundred fifty thousand still exists in the town account for purchase, uh, exclusive via this property.
Yeah.
And then where are we getting, uh, the rest of the funds is, is the other question, so.
Okay.
It's in finance right now, but that's, at least I've had contact, uh, with ownership.
That's our update on that. The next one, can you keep, keep us?
Yeah, always a great.
Number, number three, update again is, uh, now bubble holding, LLC, three seventy-three Cross Highway, map one seventy.
Is appropriate.
Yeah, lot thirty-six, uh, conducting significant activity, filling up inland wetlands in a regulated area without a permit. Can you give us a little bit there?
Update, uh, was able to track down, um, with quite enormous effort on, uh, part of the department to, uh, make contact with the, um, attorney that represented ownership, uh, during closing. I included that letter, uh, in your packets from the Ballad Band and Draxx Law Firm. Uh, they did receive, um, the, I think it was my fourth attempt at a different address, um, NOV. Um, so they requested additional thirty days to reclaim a, a land use attorney, uh, as they are not, uh, equipped to do so. So, at least we made contact with someone who connected us to.
To somebody.
Ownership somewhere.
That's good, yeah.
And, uh, we, yeah. We're on that one.
We'll see for that with the, yeah, keep it going, and hopefully somebody shows up, uh. And number four is, um, updates on what was funny, Wakeman Lane, map two forty-six lot five C, significant activities, deposition materials, wetlands diversion, et cetera, without permit. We had our executive session, so we're all up to date on that and, uh.
Maybe that's the last time we see that.
Hopefully, yes, yes, uh, but continue it until, you know, whatever we need to do. Um, and the staff report, number one, reports from the conservation department, A is D W, confirming application received nine. Notice a violation issued zero, okay? C citations issued zero, all right. So. About citations last time, if not, um, did we talk about citations already or not, if you recall? Uh, so there's a, there's a whole thing that the RTM approved, there's this, there's a hearing officer, um, that maybe I can get her come one day, she's one of the, she doesn't need to be here. Because, anyway, so the staff now, the RTM has approved, um, these citations, it's with the money involved and Tim issued a citation, they have ten days to appeal that and, and it goes to this hearing officer who will hear it out, um, and either, you know, Tim is right, or, or they're wrong, or Tim can also work with them sometimes and say, well, okay, the fines gone up, but it kind of helps them. Push along and get it, get done, because that was that monetary fee, Jay liked that and you like, like that, so it's there. The town now, now has it.
Good.
Um, I'm, I'm also the town's hearing officer, but we didn't have this before, so I'm doing zoning and the other person's doing here and, and so it's, it's, it's great. I've done that with oth- other towns, we're, you know, representing clients with other towns, where it's not so much about the fee, it's not so much about the money, it's about getting the action done. So just, yeah, that's what, you know, getting a result, yeah, getting it right, moving along.
I think it's great.
Okay.
Okay.
Good. All right. What else we have? Yeah, debond, at least eight blocks for November, but what were they, let's go back.
Toxic weed.
All right, which way? We're not doing that.
Well, unless you want to, the toxic Avenger over here.
You'll be able to see me at night.
Yeah, that's right. Kind of coming out of that, the pond or something. Um, really, it's just the, I like the sign that.
I could stand on the fence.
Fifteen thirty-six Reading Road.
Yeah.
Um, well, it's, it's winter, we do one, these Sunday mornings, is that the, what we're doing?
There's not much to see there, it's just a ma, you know, maintenance before bay. That's up to you guys, but I don't think it's very.
There's nothing, how do you feel?
What's the address?
Fifteen thirty-six Reading Road. And it really is just removing some fragmities and, and.
Dredging?
Dredging.
I don't think it's the whole pond, it's just the forbay, right? Just the forbay, I don't think it's worth.
Not worth it? If, if, if your commissioners are comfortable with that, I mean, then we don't need to.
I'm very comfortable with sleeping in.
Okay, very good then, that's fine. That's fine, and, and how's they? It works, so then, we, I think for, uh, no, we have others. Okay, uh, Roman numeral thirteen, other, number one, five and fifteen, pond, lane, beast, tromble. Anything going on there, Tim?
Just a brief update, uh, I've had contact with the chair of, uh, Easton's Conservation Commission, who provided, um, thank you feedback to, uh, to the department for the staff review and recommendation of the application. And, uh, it's, their, public hearing and review process is still ongoing, I believe in both towns, so. Um, that's really the only update I have, I think we're kind of out of it in a sense that we gave our comments and it's up to the other towns.
Yeah.
Um, municipalities to, uh.
To do their thing.
Yeah.
Very good.
Okay.
And if you get, if you need, we did, we have a sidewalk online, so.
Yeah.
You got to re层layerize yourself for the visuals, it's, it's there. Okay. And number two is an update on the tide mill dam repairs.
So, uh, I think I brought this up, um, hence the update, but this is referring to, uh, ninety-five Harbor Road in Southport, uh, where Harbor Road crosses over, uh, the Mill River and, uh, upstream, it's, uh, to your right would be Mill River and, uh, downstream would be Southport Harbor off to your left. I, I've been having, um, almost weekly Zoom meetings with DEP, dam safety, DEP, fisheries, marine and inland, uh, race, um, consulting engineers, ownership. Uh, it's related to, uh, the failed flap kittens on the right, uh, I guess on the north side. Or east side of, uh, of the dam is, are three flaps that let water out. Obviously, a high tide water goes over the top of the dam and upstream. Comments have been coming in all summer due to low flow in the Mill River. Now we know for a lot of reasons, besides weather and beavers, it's also failure of, of one of these flaps that's letting water out constantly, uh, outgoing tides. So it's, this is just an update that, um, next week, uh, we'll be meeting with this group as well as, um, bill peer, attorney peers to talk about what, um, about grant funding, which was part of the, um, discussion that a private entity can't have access to state dollars for repair. So it would have to go through us, except my point was to, the group was, the town doesn't own property. So, Bill's suggestion that we'll be discussing is, um, the town get an easement over the dam to provide access funds for the repair. Um, and really kind of the only way I'm involved, I got the harbor management commission involved because of Southport Harbor, they have jurisdiction. But we really don't, other than the argument that what happens here affects the Mill River upstream.
Right.
Um, kind of, that's kind of why I've stayed involved, because there's no open space, it's, it's idle, so we're out of that, that's deep. So anyway, I've, I've been kind of the town liaison the last few months, um, through this process and it's, it is still ongoing and I also published a statement on our department homepage to the public, um, who read it and can access, access it, um, from race that provides kind of the big picture of, hey, this is what's happening, we know. Um, and, and really fisheries is, is very happy because it's the first time they've seen, um, wubac herring as, uh, as far as, um, uh, the, the dam at the north end, uh, Lake Hills. So, the, the fish are getting up there with this failed flap and they love that. Now, um, in, in the, in the design, what the fisheries want is, um, no, actually, they want to have a sluice gate and leave it open during migration.
Yeah, that's cool.
And, um, and then close it to keep, retain water upstream.
Happy accident.
Who owns this dam?
The dam's privately owned, um, by that firm that owns the, uh, office, the old building there. Mister Good, I've been working with Mister Goodridge, one of the owners of the, of the firm, so.
Okay.
He's been great, they want to do the right thing, they want to do what needs to be done, um, and work with everyone, so that's not an issue.
Anything else from any connection?
Nice job today on the, uh, dedication of the trail.
Oh, yeah.
It was a lovely, lovely event, she, she's awesome. She's awesome. Great.
Really great.
Excellent.
All right.